Welcome to June 15th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Councilman, or excuse me, the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Eddie Smotherman has our prayer and our pledge.
Please pray with me. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. The wonderful rain today was much needed, and especially for those of us who planted bushes last week. We're thankful for the wonderful city we live in. Thank you for all the people who worked diligently in this city to make our city special and to make it what we get to enjoy on a daily basis. Please protect our police officers, our firefighters, and all the other people who are out there working to keep our city safe. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We have one ceremonial item, but I think this could be Rick's. But I've got a locket that someone left out in the crowd. It's a heart with "Sis Strong" on it. If someone left that, so...
Well, thank you.
I'll leave this up here, so if someone left it, just come up after the meeting and grab that. We have one ceremonial item tonight. Want to ask Ms. Michelle Willard if she would come up. Gretchen, you want to come up too?
Uh-uh.
It's Independence Week, but that's not necessarily about what you think. That is for independent business owners. And small business owners and independent business owners, I like to joke when people say that we need to recruit corporate headquarters to Murfreesboro, and there are a lot of us who own small business who our corporate headquarters are based in Murfreesboro. And so, we want to celebrate this week, Independence Week. It provides a time to celebrate the independence of the members of the community of Murfreesboro and their entrepreneurial spirit, represented by our core of local independent businesses. And whereas the individual decisions every community member makes today affect the future of Murfreesboro, and whereas Murfreesboro's local independent businesses help preserve the uniqueness of the community and give a sense of place, and whereas Murfreesboro's core of independently owned businesses give back to this community in goods, services, time, and talent, and whereas the health of Murfreesboro's economy depends on our supportive businesses owned by our friends and our neighbors, and whereas Murfreesboro's independent business owners and employees enrich community members, shopping experiences with their knowledge and passion. Therefore, as we celebrate Independence Week 2017, we acknowledge that the ability to choose the direction of Murfreesboro lies within each of us. Now therefore, I, Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of July 1st through the 7th, where a little early, Independence Week, and salute our community members and locally owned independent businesses who are integral to the unique flavor of Murfreesboro and honor their efforts to make Murfreesboro the place we want to live and work. All right. We'll move into the consent agenda. You have several items on your consent agenda.
There's no questions. I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. If the audience members didn't notice, we're going to start doing special effects on each of our votes. That's the lighthearted vote, because it's the consent agenda, but as we get into more controversial votes, we'll adjust the tone according to that. So thanks to the people on City TV 3 for doing that. We'll now conduct a public hearing and consider for approval a certificate of compliance for Adele McCaris for Top Shelf Liquors 2122, D and E, North Thompson Lane.
Mayor, this is for a new owner and also a new location. The business is already located in one suite. They're going to expand into the suite next door, and so this is for that address plus a new owner. You will need to do a public hearing to be in accordance with the rules for the city to mistake.
So that's our special effect for alcohol liquor stores. All right. Is everything in order?
We need a public hearing.
Okay. All right. We're having trouble with our audio. People at home can't hear, so we won't be able to apologize, because they won't be able to hear us. So everyone who's here can hear us, though. So we'll need to conduct a public hearing. How we handle our public hearings, if you're wishing to speak for or against something, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name, address, any questions or comments, if you'll direct those directly to the City Council at the end of the public hearing, we'll get those questions answered. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this certificate of compliance, please come to the podium. See you none. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider the certificate of compliance.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 3A and B, which is the Cove at Oakland's, has been withdrawn. I want to read a letter that we've all received for the record. This is from Huddleston Steel Engineering to Mr. Gary Whitaker, Planning Director. It says, "Mr. Whitaker, on behalf of our client, Brian Burns, we hereby request to withdraw the Cove at Oakland's PRD from the June 15, 2017, Murfreesboro City Council Agenda. We're seeking to rezone the property from the current general office residential OGR District to planned residential development PRD District. We are withdrawing in order to allow Griggs and Maloney Engineering to devote more study to wetlands issues on the subject property. We will contact you when we have more information to share. Sincerely, Huddleston Steel Engineering, Clyde Roundtree." Item 3A and 3B are deferred. Item 4A pursuant to Resolution 17 RPH 22, adopted by the City Council on May 18, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 22.5 acres along New Salem Highway from residential multifamily 16 District to planned residential development PRD District, Bell Tower Apartments PRD, Castle Construction Company applicant 2017-409. Notice this said public hearing was published in the May 29, 2017 issue of a local newspaper.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Donald Anthony with the Planning Department. Castle Construction Company, represented by Matt Taylor of SEC, wishes to rezone a 22.5 acre property located along the north side of New Salem Highway. This is a portion of the property known as the Myrtle Bell Property, which was recently master planned just a couple of years ago. The proposed rezoning is from RM 16 to PRD, or Planned Residential District, and the PRD would include a 384 unit multifamily residential development. The gross density of the development would be 17 units per acre. The units would be divided among seven separate apartment buildings, each reaching four stories in height. Adjacent zoning includes RZ on the northwest, RM 16 on the north, northeast, and west, CH on the east, RS 15 on the south, and PUD on the southwest. A road that would be constructed as part of this development was included in the master plan, and it will promote internal circulation when this property is completely built out. This specific project will not tie into any neighboring subdivisions or streets other than New Salem Highway. The Murfreesboro 2035 Plan, which has not yet been adopted by the city, however we do reference it, shows this area as being appropriate for multifamily housing. This request appears to be consistent with the plan. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item on May 3. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to send this item to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. With that, I'll recognize Matt Taylor from SEC to talk more about this project, and staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Matt Taylor from SEC, located here in Murfreesboro. I'm accompanied tonight by Rory McLean of Castle Construction, as well as Tony Hittai, the architect, Mr. John Harney, the agent from Park Trust. We're here tonight to present to you the Bell Tower Apartments' request for rezoning, and we do have a brief presentation for you, if we can bring that up on the monitor. Or I can wing it. You can see it? Okay. So I'll just go ahead and get started. First, I'd like to talk about where the property is. Mr. Anthony did a good job orienting you. It's on the north side of New Salem Highway, located between St. Andrews and Casey Lane. The property's mostly vacant with a few agricultural structures located closer to New Salem Highway. It is part of the, what we've termed in the past, the Myrtle Bell Farm. The property is currently zoned RM 16. To the west is Westberry Farms Apartments, also RM 16, and then to the north and east is RM 16, as well as Commercial Highway, as Mr. Anthony said. The site is RM 16. We've requested the PRD, so we'd be allowed to add a fourth story. We're not requesting any extra density with this request. All of our density requests are within the zoning ordinance allowance. Here's some of the existing structures on site. This is looking toward the east along New Salem Highway, and then into the property itself. The plan itself is approximately 22 and a half acres with 384 proposed apartment units. That's a density of about 17 units to the acre. We've designed this, so it has a strong streetscape presence. Try to orient all the internal uses and the parking away from public view from the roads, so that's internal to the site. We've also created an abundance of parking, and that's mixed between surface parking as well as garages, and all of that is relatively close to the buildings themselves, so it's easy walking distance for each of our residents, and we've promoted that through a network of sidewalks and walking trails on site. And again, as Mr. Anthony said, this site is completely independent from road connections to our neighboring properties. We will have the one connection to New Salem Highway proposed with this plan. As you go inside the development itself, we've tried to maintain our streetscape by creating a main street ambiance with the boulevard, and then only having parallel parking along the front of these units, and again, hiding the parking behind these units as you come into the development. We've got a centrally located clubhouse that's very well connected through sidewalks, to try to create that as an activity hub. We'll also be using a concierge trash service within our buildings, essentially where somebody comes to your unit, picks up your trash, and takes it to the compactor, rather than you having to drive out to it. We've also planned several intricate plazas between the buildings that are interconnected with our walking trails and sidewalks to try to promote interaction with our residents and more walking within the development. The buildings themselves will all be four stories. They'll range in size from 850 square feet to about just over 1,400 square feet in size. Our buildings will have elevators. We propose that to bring a little different higher-end product to the market in this area. These are some of the sample floor plans. Building materials, all high-quality materials, brick, stone, cement board siding, standing seam metal, and architectural shingles. Here's an example of one of the fronts. You can see a lot of details, variations in the front roof line, as well as stepping the building in and out, a good mixture of buildings or materials as you go across the front facade there, and then a very pronounced entryway that's distinguished by some ornamental lighting. Same thing on the other building. We only have two building types, and both of them are similar in nature, but do have their differences. And then some of the garages on site will marry the same materials used on the buildings themselves. Amenities, we feel like we've spread these throughout. The main focal point of that amenity will be, obviously, the clubhouse, but we've started our amenities, we feel like, by providing prominent entry signage at each of our entrances. And the clubhouse itself will take architectural characteristics from the main buildings and bring it here, except for shrink it down to a one-story building versus a four-story We'll have a pool, plenty of lounge area, grilling areas, and just areas together around the pool. Have a playground as well, and volleyball, as well as a dog park. Highlighted here is our walking trail. You can see that encircles the entire site, as well as all the internal sidewalk that will promote that pedestrian activity. Access, as Mr. Anthony said, it was part of an overall master plan that was approved several years ago. Our proposed access will be one public road coming off New Salem Highway, which will construct right turn lane improvements on New Salem Highway with that road, and all of our entrances are gated. Highlighted here in red would be the only public portion. The rest would be private on site at those three entrances. Myself or any member of the team would be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing, if you have them.
Mr. Taylor, was a neighborhood meeting held?
No, not for this particular project.
You mentioned that this would allow you to go to four stories.
Yes, sir.
How high is, RM 16 is three maximum?
Yes, sir.
And so you had said that you're not having any extra density with this, but...
Right.
It looks like there's going to be more units than would be there under a bulk zoning. Is that...
No, sir. With the bulk zoning, with the amenities that we're proposing on site, you get density bonuses, and so we're still within that with all the amenities that we're proposing on site. You get some based on how big your pool is, your clubhouse, your playground, your walking trails, and so whenever you add all those up, we're still within the zoning ordinance's density. That was a very key part of our conversations with staff early on, was we really wanted a different building architecture and the building style, but we knew we did not want to be asking for extra density.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Taylor, I just have one question. I want to make sure we have a current moratorium in place on any new apartment zonings, but how does this, I know this is a PRD, but how does this go with that?
Well, it depends on what council, how do they define the moratorium itself. Right now, I believe the moratorium, as the council has defined it, is on new zoning, changing of zoning to go, to allow for new apartment complexes, but this is a PRD.
This is already RM 16.
Right. As long as this is consistent with the existing zoning, then it doesn't fall afoul of the moratorium.
The questions I would have, Mr. Taylor, for the applicant, I've gotten unfortunately to become somewhat of an expert on apartment complexes over the last five or six weeks, and maybe on some things on what not to do.
Uh-huh.
And, you know, Chief Dur and both Deputy Chief Bowen and Assistant Chief Cook are here, and we're working on, even though this is not in the area that we've been focused on, we're working on some standards that we're wanting to put in place for multifamily units in regards to monitored parking specifically. We're looking, the apartment complexes that we see that do not monitor parking, we see a higher incidence of crime. You know, with 384 units on such a, all that tight together, is there going to be, what type of security measures are in place? We're working on some accreditation measures on, with our apartment complexes, on making sure that we, as a city, are able to control those and it not be a burden on the taxpayer. So do you all have some of those things worked out yet?
I'll let Rory speak to the security and the monitor parking. He's a little more familiar with that.
Rory McLean, Castle Construction. There is going to be security cameras in place. Monitoring will be just within the security system itself.
Just with the cameras?
Yes.
Okay. How about your parking? Will it be monitored parking at all?
There'll be cameras in the parking lots as well.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. Yep. All right. We'll need to hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application, please come to the podium.
I'm Chris Davis, and I live at 3336 Berry Side Drive. My neighbors and I are here representing our neighborhood of Salem Cove Crossing, which is adjacent to the proposed Bell Tower Apartments. We come to you tonight to express our concerns over the rezoning request by Castle Construction for the purpose of allowing the addition of a fourth floor to the Bell Tower Apartments. While we appreciate the quality of this building, the quality of this planned community, we are concerned that the buildings will be 52 feet tall, especially since no other apartment complexes in our area are four stories. A few examples are those located on Casey Lane, close to New Salem Highway, which are Casey Estates and the two new apartment complexes currently under construction behind CBS, and Westberry Farm, which is adjacent to the proposed Bell Tower Apartments. All these apartments or complexes are three, two, and three stories, which are norm for our area. This proposal would have all seven Bell Tower apartment buildings four stories. We don't want what is currently happening at the avenue where two apartment complexes are under construction, one five-story and one four-story. These buildings can be seen from a distance away. So can you imagine what our neighborhood and the other neighborhoods around this proposed complex would be able to see? Therefore, we are requesting that you keep the Bell Tower Apartment Complex to three stories. I'll repeat that, to three stories. I would refer to an article by Sam Stockard in the Murfreesboro Post back on August 30, 2016, and I quote here where it states that, "From State Route 99 interchange to Veterans Parkway in the St. Andrews Drive area, the city has 5,000 apartments built or undergoing construction. And that, putting such a large number of units in one area, causes heavy traffic and hinders the city's ability to provide services, including the added burden on our schools. The sole purpose of this rezoning request is allowing a fourth floor to be added so that an additional 106 units will be available to rent. I ask you, is it worth it? The area around New Salem Highway is virgin land, and because of this, we ask that the council consider what you are about to approve. You will be setting a precedent that we are asking you not to do. Mayor McFarland and council members, as your constituents and as residents who love our community, we ask that you reject this rezoning request. Three stories is enough. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Is there a point I would...
You can come to the podium if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Jake Burkhalter of Roxbury Drive here in Murfreesboro. I'm also representing Save Oakland's Park Wetland. I wanted to make a short talk, no questions, just we had come, of course, tonight to speak about the previous item.
So is it about this complex?
It was about the item before.
No, sir. Our public hearing right now is about this complex. So we...
Okay.
Yeah. The Oakland's has been postponed, and we will absolutely make sure you're aware when that comes forward, but this is about the development on Highway 99.
Okay. Will there be another opportunity for me to speak to this tonight?
No, sir.
Really, we've put in a lot of effort. I'm sorry.
Well, we appreciate that, but the public hearing for the development, we're not even, it's not even going to be in front of us tonight. We're not even having that discussion. So we do have our public comment that would be at the first meeting in July, if you wanted to come and talk about that, but this is just for that specific development.
Okay. I don't know the process.
No, no, you're fine.
I thought maybe the public comment periods were open on any topic.
No, no. The public hearing is for this specific development.
Okay. So that's mistaken. It's not a...
No.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for, and thank you for the emails you've been sending to.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right.
Sorry to interrupt your speaking. Address a lot of this in a very...
No, no problem. All right.
Can I have the end?
No, sir.
Can I have the end?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not discussing Oakland's tonight. So, all right. Anyone else wishing to speak for this development? All right. See you none. We'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on First Reading Ordinance 17OZ22 to rezonate an area located along New Salem Highway to Planned Residential Development PRD District, Bell Tower Apartments PRD 2017-409.
Mr. Whitaker, could I ask you a question, please? I'll ask this in a different way than maybe I asked you at the mat, Mr. Taylor, is with the way that this land is shaped and with the amenities that they're going to have and everything included, are there going to be, you know, as far as usable space and all that, once you factor all that in, are there going to be more units here as a result of this than they would have been able to do under the bulk zoning?
The bulk zoning allows increases. It's RM 16, 16 units per acre, but they do get bonuses for amenities they put in. And what, Mr. Taylor, and I'll let him address that in just a second, but what they did is calculate, I do believe, the amount of gross area, the amenities. So basically, it's the same number of units, not an increase in number of units. They wanted to primarily go to four stories to get elevator, because to put the elevator in, make it cost-effective typically, and I've heard that from all the developers, if they want to put elevators to help with the cost of that, that basically you have to go a four-story. It's just not economically feasible. They wanted the... They wanted the elevator element in, and they wanted to go to four stories, and if I'm not mistaken, I think they actually pulled the buildings a little further off the property line to try to help accommodate for the height.
I just want to make sure we address the ladies' concerns about the additional, and I was frankly, I'm a little confused on it too, to make sure whether this is or isn't based on usable space, but.
When they came and talked to staff, we basically were very upfront and told them, if you're adding a four, a floor, bad density, that that was not going to happen. They came back, showed us the numbers, what they would be allowed, so they haven't asked for an increase in density, just the fourth floor to accommodate the elevators. And there's some economics in that, that you have to figure in when the cost of putting the elevator in, it's just not feasible in a four, in a three-story, from my understanding.
Yeah, I think the fourth floor is a totally separate issue for me, I mean, as far as comfort or non, or discomfort with it, but just want to make sure we are square on the density piece of it.
And we did have concerns about the fourth floor, close, you know, so they actually pulled those buildings out to accommodate, is that correct, Mr. Taylor? To, to ensure that the visual effect from people overlooking, so they pulled those out, and I'll let Mr. Taylor address that.
I think Gary's right. With the current RM 16, I think we could be within about 25 feet of the property line with a, up to a three-story building, and we've pulled those back to be about 300-plus feet off the property line that's closest to the subdivision to the northwest.
Is this the first time four stories have been allowed? We heard that comment in public hearing as well, is that?
The RM 16 and 12 zoning will not allow you to go over three stories.
Right.
But we do have planned developments that do allow over, and typically, we have, we see that, they'll come through as a planned development to get the fourth or fifth floor out in the gateway, and it's MU zoning, but we have some taller units going in. And we've had a lot of inquiry to go to that fourth floor to put that element in, because it, you know, when you get away from the college-type apartments, and you're going for, and I consider myself more senior now, the elevators are a nice amenity, and typically the upscale apartments, they're trying to market to the older crowd, i.e. me, and to get that, they have the elevators in there, which is a nice amenity.
Again, this is the first time four stories, stories have been allowed in, in this area?
Well, it may be in this area, I'm not, well, if it's RM zoning, that would be correct, because they would only be allowed to go three stories.
Let me ask you one more question, too. That, that road that is, normally we, we like to have two egress and regress, and with this kind of development of over 300 units in this area, and we have Salem Pike, one entrance in this proposed, is that, what, is that, you comfort with, comfortable with that?
Comfortable today, there will be future build-out of this property, there's some commercial aspects of it, and then there's some for future build-out, and there's some connectivity with future roads, and we're hoping that that will provide in the future the secondary egress. Today, that's just not in, in the develop, we have a future development plan that will help with that, but it's, they're kind of the first in, so. We did talk about that, but really, to have them, to strap them with a secondary ingress, egress for this development, I don't think is totally fair at this time.
Is that road in front of the development, is that a private road or public road?
It'd be a public road that we would, we'd build and dedicate back to the city.
Mr. Whitaker, how much longer before we have our design guidelines and our, our, our multifamily, you know, whatever decisions that we're going to make as far as, you know, saturation and separation? How long, where are we on that?
The design guidelines, we have a new meeting scheduled that was sent to Mr. Lyons and proposal for, to, so we're actually picking that back up during budget time, I kind of set that on the shelf, but we're starting that next two weeks, that will, that will start the design guideline meetings back up. As far as the proposal for the council for the apartment changes, that comes up tonight here in just a few minutes, so we'll have that before you.
Okay.
In just a few minutes, we'll present that.
If, if we leave this as RM 16, and we decide to make changes to the, you know, to the design guidelines or whatever, will that apply to the, to this property? And maybe, I mean, is that?
Well, the property that was previously zoned RM 16, they couldn't come in and ask for the RM 16 zoning because of the moratorium. They can, however, ask for a planned development, this is a planned development. If it was approved tonight and we make changes, it would not affect this, because it would get, well, it would get, it wouldn't have second, it would have first, it would have a second and 15 days to go. Well, I would ask that question to our city attorney, whether it would have bearing on any future changes.
Well, it would depend on when the changes came and went into effect. Obviously, if we approved this project, it would go without the changes being in effect, and they would not have bearing on this property.
It wouldn't apply to the PRD, but would it apply to an RM 16?
It would apply to an RM 16 that, that developed after we put the new changes into effect, it would.
Not that was zoned after, but developed that.
Developed.
Site plan, yeah, right.
The changes that, that we will present tonight, if approved, dealing with the apartments, would not affect the previous RM 16 zonings, because they have a zoning in time.
Yeah, 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 I got that. I'm just trying to figure out how the.
Right. I think, just looking over the changes we're going to propose, the development with the planned development, open space, I believe they would actually meet the requirements that we're imposing, that, you know, if, if the council were to approve those tonight.
Except the four stories?
Yes, and you have to go with a planned development to get that, yes, and they're doing that, actually.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Taylor, it, it's a two-phase development, is that correct? It's going to be developed in two, two different phases, is that?
Yes, sir. You should have the booklet in front of you, and the rear two buildings, what we've identified as, on the northern side, would be phase two.
And those are the ones that are closest to the residents that, that we're concerned that?
They, they are, they are closer than any of the other buildings, yes.
Could you drop those to three stories?
Let me talk to my client real quick. The, the landowner, Ms. Nieders, who is the underlying applicant here, had a family conflict tonight and couldn't come, and so, in order for us to agree to that, we would have to consult with her, and so we'd have to bring that answer back to you at a future date, Mr. Shackleton.
My biggest concern, you know, we've got the property is zoned RM 16, and I think there's some good comments have been brought up with the four stories next to the adjacent properties, but, you know, I, again, don't want to punish every development for some of the things that we've been dealing with, but I want, especially since this is a planned development, that when we've got a community, a parcel as dense as this, I would rather see, you know, moving forward, when people come in, a clear security plan on what they're going to do besides, hey, we've got cameras, I'd like to see, what are you going to do to monitor your parking? What are you going to do to be able to provide, you know, where we've talked about parking passes and things, I mean, I think those are some of the things, Mr. Taylor, I.
And we certainly understand that y'all are going through that process, and without those, if you've got some guidelines or even a draft, if we could get a copy or whatever form that's going to take, we'll be happy to take that back and review it, and, you know, obviously, Ms. Nieders owns a lot of property here, she owns the rest of the Bell Farm, so this is going to be a quite lengthy process and development for her, so she obviously wants to take whatever.
Sure.
Measures necessary to ensure that this is a quality development for a long time.
Yeah, I think the main thing for us, we're going to have to start asking those questions on the front end, that we don't, you know, end up asking the questions on the back end when we've already got the issues. We're going to have to see what those, those policies and procedures are on, you know, at the very get-go, so that we at least know, as a city, how we're going to be able to manage, so. I would recommend getting with, with staff to talk about security, traffic, the parking lots and those things.
We'll be happy to do that.
It seems like we just talked about this piece of property not too long ago. Do you know when we, when we zoned, when it was zoned RM 16?
The bulk of the property was zoned RM 16, I think, five to six years ago, and then it was amended to bring a leg of RM 16 down to the highway, which is the western portion, because we wanted to give the opportunity to allow front over on New Salem Highway.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Any updates on New Salem Road improvements, because this is a, you know, that area is a, can be a difficult situation to traverse.
I believe it's, the first section of New Salem is set to be bid out at the end of the year by T.D.
I was talking to Sam Holston today and asked that specific question, and hopefully two out of the three sections will be let in December, is what he had informed me. I'm not in the engineering department, but I slept in a Holiday Inn Express.
And we're not proposing to lie to this, at the entrance of, on Salem, we're not proposing any kind of?
Not that I'm aware of, no, but we hope, like I said, that two phases of it will be, they're, they're wanting to get three phases of it ready, but I think we'll only be ready for the two phases to start on it, and, and we're ready for them.
All right, what's the will of the council? Mr. Taylor?
I'm not counsel, obviously, nor do I wish to be, but with some of the questions brought up about the security, I think we would probably, we would like to ask for a deferral, so we can get with staff to get those measures, and we can bring you back an action plan on that.
Move for deferral.
Second.
Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, beside of Mr. Fird. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH24 adopted by the Murfreesboro City Council on May 18th, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending the Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning pertaining to motor vehicle sales and plan sign overlay planning staff applicant notice to say public hearing was published in the May 29th, 2017, issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a follow-up to the moratorium on vehicle sales lots, the planning department has spent the last several weeks reviewing our zoning ordinance regulations. Like many of you, we have observed vehicle loading and unloading in public rights of way, including shoulders and center turn lanes in a few places as well. A major cause of this appears to be vehicle sales lots being located on parcels that are simply not adequately sized to handle this particular use. The ordinance revision that we're asking you to approve today addresses these issues and a few others. Currently, vehicle sales lots are allowed by right in the CH, MU, LI and HI zoning districts. With this amendment, we propose taking the following steps. First, differentiate between types of vehicle sales. We propose splitting the use vehicle sales into three distinct use categories, automobiles, other than automobiles, and non-motorized. Second, we propose requiring special use permits for automobile sales lots in the CH and MU zoning districts. Because of the intensity of the use and the spatial demands of automobile sales lots, we think that adding an extra level of review would be helpful. Third, in all districts, we propose adding several specific standards for automobile sales lots. These include requiring all loading, unloading and maneuvering to take place on-site in a place specifically designated for such activity, requiring that salvage vehicles not be kept on-site, adding protections for residential areas that may abut automobile sales lots, limiting hours of operation and outdoor noise, and requiring that salvage automobiles and automobile parts not be stored outdoors. These standards would apply to all automobile lots regardless of the zoning district. For lots requiring special use permits, these standards would be applied by the BZA and then staff and/or the planning commission during the site plan review process. For lots not requiring special use permits, application of these standards would be the responsibility of staff and/or the planning commission. As noted in the staff report, we think that these steps will help advance safety and aesthetics in our city, particularly on our most heavily traveled corridors. The planning commission held a public hearing on this item on May 3rd. Following the public hearing, the planning commission voted to send this item to the city council with a favorable recommendation. We can answer any questions about this aspect, and I believe David Ives probably has more information about the plan sign overlay aspect of this amendment.
Thank you, Donald, yes, ma'am, counsel. The current zoning ordinance provision in creating the plan sign overlay contains a provision that says no master signage plan, types of signs prohibited citywide by the given sign ordinance, and then there are about five exceptions carved out from that. Having worked with the PSOs for several years, it is staff's opinion that that restriction is too restrictive and should be removed. The purpose, a purpose at least, one of the big purposes of a plan sign overlay is to allow new and creative signs on large unusual developments. The PSOs are limited to projects of 20 acres or more. The package has to be approved by both the planning commission and by city council on two readings after public hearings at both planning commission and city council. And when it's, developments within the Gateway III area, it also has to be approved by the Gateway Design Review Committee. With this intensity of review, staff believes that that limitation prohibiting the, those signs that are not specifically allowed by the regular zoning ordinance is too restrictive, and we recommend that the provision be deleted. That section of the proposed ordinance would do that. We have to answer your questions. And this as well was recommended by the planning commission.
Okay. We'll need to hold a public hearing for these two code changes. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17O24, amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning, Section 2, interpretation to definitions, Section 9, standards for special permit uses, Section 24-4, plan signage overlay district, and Chart 1, uses permitted by zoning district pertaining to motor vehicle sales and plan sign overlay. Murfreesboro Planning and Legal Departments applicants, 2017-805. I just want to say thanks to staff, you know, the whole purpose of us putting some restrictions on motor vehicle sales, we're not trying to punish any individual business, but I think everyone can agree, a semi-truck in the middle of a five-lane road offloading cars, I think it's just common sense, if you're going to have a business, you should be able to accept inventory, and I looked at the requirements, zero to 25 cars were requiring two customer spaces, so it's not like we're putting a burden, and I think that would be, be something that would be easily, easy to handle.
There's no other comments, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright for call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Tindall, I guess on item six, I've got to read every bit of that, correct? All right, everyone get comfortable. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH25 adopted by the city council on May 18th, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning, Section 9, standards for special use permits, Section 13, plan development regulations, Section 14, districts established, Section 14A, amenity incentives for multifamily developments in the multifamily residential districts, Section 19, residential districts, Section 24, overlay district regulations, Section 25, temporary and accessory structures and uses, Section 26, all-street parking, queuing and loading, Section 27, land. Section twenty-seven, landscaping and screening. Chart one, uses permitted by zoning district. Chart two, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements and land use intensity ratios. Chart four, required off-street parking and queuing spaces by use. Table one, adjacent and proposed zoning districts. Table two, buffer zoning requirements pertaining to single-family and multifamily housing. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department applicant, two thousand seventeen dash eight oh six. Notice that said public hearing was published in the May twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, issue of a local newspaper.
On one that's even longer.
I was distracted by a text.
Could you read that again, bigger?
This is a multi-part zoning ordinance amendment that we have crafted over a period of several months while the moratorium on multifamily rezoning has been in place. This amendment was created with three primary goals in mind. First, increase quality of life for residents of multifamily developments and adjacent single-family neighborhoods. Second, ensure that the locations and densities of multifamily developments are compatible with their surroundings. And third, provide additional zoning options for compact residential development. To achieve these goals, this amendment contains six parts. Number one, increase the required landscape buffer between single-family detached and multifamily residential developments from twelve feet to fifteen feet. This would be consistent with the buffer between single-family detached and commercial developments and would help promote privacy and compatibility, particularly where building heights and densities vary greatly. Number two, cap the number of dwelling units that can be allowed by right in the multifamily residential districts to two hundred and fifty. I would note that in our workshop with city council a few months ago, that number was suggested at one hundred. When we took this to the, to the Planning Commission, they recommended two fifty, and so today we're representing what the Planning Commission asked us to do. Anything over two fifty would require a planned development. This will give the Planning Commission and the city council the ability to work with the developer to ensure proper location and compatibility. Number three, require that multifamily developments include an adequate amount of open space. With this amendment, we propose a twenty percent open space requirement and a five percent formal open space requirement. This would promote quality of life for residents of multifamily developments. These percentages are consistent with the current draft design guidelines, as I understand them, twenty percent open space and five percent formal open space. Number four, eliminate the RM twenty-two district. This district has not been used for multifamily developments, and twenty-two units per acre should probably require planned development review and approval, as that is a much higher density than we are accustomed to in Murfreesboro. Number five, create a new RS six zoning district that would allow six thousand square foot lots. This zoning designation would be most appropriate in areas with revitalization projects, but the Planning Commission and city council may consider it appropriate in other areas as well. Number six, finally, create a new RSA zoning district that would allow for a variety of housing types. This district would replace the RZ district and would consist of three distinct development types. A, which is type one, would be consistent with the current RZ standards and would allow the same uses as RZ. In fact, with this amendment, everything that is currently zoned RZ would default to this RSA type one. Type two would be conventional or suburban townhomes that may include front garages or parking lots and would be compatible to most of the, with most of the townhome developments that we've seen here in recent years. Type three would be a more traditional townhouse, something more like a brownstone or a very urban product that's pulled to the street. This is currently a less common development type here in Murfreesboro, but we would expect to see this possibly in redeveloping areas, particularly around downtown. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item on May third. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to send this item to the city council with a favorable recommendation. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
If there's no questions, I will move to approve item six with one change that we move that back to a hundred to require a PRD. Oh, hey.
Public hearing first. That's what I meant to say.
There's a motion for public hearing. All right, anyone wishing to speak for or this request from the planning staff, please come to the podium.
John Floyd, sixteen ten Georgetown Lane. I own Old South Properties, a home builder here in Murfreesboro. I'm here just to speak in regards to the R six, or six thousand foot lots that are being in front of you tonight for that particular zoning. As you know, we've done PUDs for years and years to get smaller lots. In the downturn of oh seven through oh ten, a tremendous amount of PUDs failed in Murfreesboro and all over the United States. They had great plans, but they didn't, didn't make it to the end. So allowing this straight zoning to allow us to have smaller lots will be better for the community and also be better for the city because it was just such a shipwreck when all these PUDs failed and you had one come after, you know, you're constantly having them come back amending the PUD. And obviously, if you're a customer and you bought in the beginning of the PUD, you're not a happy camper when they turn around and change it in the middle. This will avoid these problems. Anyway, that's my comments. If you have a question to me, I'm here to answer it. I do probably more of those lots than anybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Taylor from SCC, we've went through these several times with staff and looked at those and are generally supportive of the new requirements inside of those. I think you'll wind up with better product in the end. And be happy to answer any questions for me. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading, Ordinance seventeen oh twenty-five, amending Appendix A zoning, Sections nine, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen A, nineteen, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, Chart one, two, and four, and Table one and two, two thousand seventeen dash eight oh six.
Sorry, I jumped ahead there. The list was so long, I thought we'd already had the public hearing. You guys have any comments or questions? I'll move for approval with one amendment, that we move it back from two fifty to one hundred to require the PRD, the number of units.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
No.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, pursuant to Resolution seventeen RPH twenty-six adopted by the city council on May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter twenty-five, two, signs, Section twenty-five, two, eight, conflicting codes and ordinances in Section twenty-five, two, dash twenty-three exemptions regarding city property and athletic fields. Planning staff applicant, notice that said public hearing was published in the May twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, issue of a local newspaper.
Mayor, I guess I get this one as well.
Mr. Rice, if you wouldn't mind pulling your microphone just a little bit closer, that'd be great.
Certainly. Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Great. So I said I get this one as well. We have two provisions to the sign ordinance that we're asking to amend tonight. First, we, we believe that the ordinance should have an overall separability clause, which would mean that if we get to court and a judge finds that some particular provision of the ordinance is invalid, the rest of the ordinance would survive. And that is not currently in the ordinance as an overall provision, and that would be the first part of this amendment. The second part is to add some additional exemptions to the sign ordinance. Currently, the sign ordinance exempts certain things such as public art and murals from the definition of a sign, and therefore, they're not controlled by the sign ordinance. We propose to add three more categories of items that are exempted from the sign ordinance. The first would be graphics or other materials that are placed on city-owned buildings or other buildings on city-owned property. And that would also include objects placed on city-owned property. The second is scoreboards and related scoreboard components that are on athletic fields if they are oriented toward the field of play. And that's, this would cover athletic fields that are in parks, in public or private schools. That would probably be the extent of it. Certainly, the university's scoreboard is, state property is exempt from our ordinance in any event. And the third category to exempt clearly are informational, directional, and other such signs that are in city parks, if they're oriented toward the park. We find that a need for a number of directional signs to direct people to particular numbered fields, that sort of thing. This is especially a problem during spring playing and other tournament times. And we, we need to be able to have more signage in those facilities, and we propose simply to exempt that signage from the sign ordinance. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Rice? Is there a motion?
Public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Public hearing.
We'll hold a public hearing for amending this code. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading, Ordinance seventeen oh twenty-six, amending Chapter twenty-five, two, dash signs, Section twenty-five, two, dash eight, conflicting codes and ordinances in Section twenty-five, two, dash twenty-three exemptions regarding city property and athletic fields.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution seventeen RPH twenty-seven adopted by the city council on May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning, Section Four, dealing with general plan and procedures. Planning Department applicant, notice that said public hearing was published in the May twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this zoning ordinance amendment is to make Section Four of the zoning ordinance consistent with the wording and procedures set forth in state law. In reviewing Section Four, we determined that our procedural requirements for adopting a comprehensive or general plan were somewhat outdated, so we have simply copied and pasted the relevant portion of Tennessee code annotated into the ordinance. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item on June seventh. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to send this item to the city council with a favorable recommendation. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Okay, we'll need to hold a public hearing on this resolution. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading, Ordinance seventeen oh twenty-seven, amending the Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning, Section Four, pertaining to general plan and procedure.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings for a rezoning along North Tennessee Boulevard from Commercial French to PRD Brookwood Point, PRD Old South Properties, Inc., the applicant. Rezoning along White Poplar Court from RS fifteen to PRD, Poplar Grove, PRD, Richard Reeves, the applicant. Rezoning along Veterans Parkway and Vaughn Road from RS fifteen to CH, Joey Pratt, Hord, et al., the applicants. Annexation Plan of Services and Annexation Petition for approximately four hundred linear feet of Emory Road right away, City of Murfreesboro Engineering Department is the applicant. The PSO amendment for approximately seventy point seven acres to amend the St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital PSO, St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital is the applicant. And a rezoning along Jackson Allen Drive and Susan Landon Drive from PCD to PRD, the Villas at Regal Square, PRD Land Questor LLC, applicant.
Mr. Mayor, the Planning Commission held public hearings on these six items at its June seventh meeting and made favorable recommendations on all six items. These items are ready to be scheduled for public hearings. Staff recommends a July thirteenth public hearing date for item E and July twentieth for items A through D and F.
Okay. We have a motion for those two dates. Item E will be on the thirteenth, and all of the others will be on the twentieth.
Move, we approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Considering any changes to the proposed two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen City of Murfreesboro budget, I wanted to make one comment. I think you all have received an email that we are gonna do a special meeting on the twenty-ninth to be at twenty-eighth. Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. Be able to discuss our market study that came back, topped out employees, and also, I think there's some discussions with some individuals in the police department that we wanted to talk about. So just different salary-related issues. So, wanted to make sure that, put that on the record that we were, we were gonna talk about that.
We understood we're gonna move all those decisions then to the, following the meeting on the twenty-eighth. I've got a handout here, it's got six fifteen seventeen council meeting written at the top. Those were the changes that you discussed last week. So column number one, under first reading, you've already approved those. You amended it before you voted on the ordinance, the budget ordinance, last week. The second column, the second reading, those were items that you discussed. With one exception, the Economic Development Director. I'm gonna pull that recommendation for this year and take a look at it, maybe revisit it for next year. But these would be the items that we discussed last week.
With one exception, the street lighting.
Yeah, we found ourselves maybe short of our estimate on street lighting, so we do recommend increasing that.
Mr. Rice, we had discussion, and after talking about this, is there a possibility that, you know, I see our IT department, that we talked about the mileage allowance on the IT department, and I saw the Geek Squad today at a place I was that we, you know, they're driving around with their cars. Is there any way we can find some kind of car that we have within the city that, maybe a surplus car or something that we could use for our IT department?
Sure, I did include a vehicle here on, on this attachment.
Okay.
It's got forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And then this, it also includes the Christmas gifts that hard-time employees...
Yeah, that was presented to you last week, yes, ma'am.
Right, so it'll be in this.
Correct. You've already voted on that.
Right.
Any other things in our budget? Okay, if there are no amendments, we'll need to consider for passage on second and final reading as amended, Ordinance seventeen oh twenty-eight appropriations.
You would need to include a vote on these amendments first.
All right, we'll need to file the amendments first. Are there any changes to the amendments?
I'll move for approval of the amendments.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for passage on second and final reading as amended, Ordinance seventeen oh twenty-eight, the appropriations ordinance.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for adoption Resolution seventeen R fifteen approving the budget of the Murfreesboro City Schools for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen, which budget includes the general purpose fund, I'm sorry, did I skip twelve? I put a check mark on it, I apologize. Consider for the passage on the second and final reading, Ordinance seventeen oh twenty-nine, the tax rate ordinance.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for adoption Resolution seventeen R fifteen approving the budget of the Murfreesboro City Schools for fiscal year seventeen eighteen, which budget includes the general purpose fund, the extended school program fund, the federal and state program funds, the cafeteria fund, and the debt service fund.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for adoption Resolution seventeen R fifteen approving the budget of the Murfreesboro City Schools Consider for adoption resolution seventeen R. sixteen approving the budget of the Evergreen Cemetery for the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, eighteen.
So, move. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for adoption resolution seventeen R. seventeen to approve the other, approve other post-employment benefits for retirees fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, eighteen.
So, move.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for adoption resolution seventeen R. nineteen approving the budget of the Murfreesboro Electric Department for the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen.
So, move. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Wanted to say, Mr. Rice, Ms. Williams, thank you for, the first time y'all have gone through our budget process. I hope it was as painless as possible, but we thank y'all for presenting a phenomenal budget. Okay, we'll move to item seventeen. We have the council discussion on the vacant council seat and the approved charter change that allows the seat to remain vacant, either have a special election or appointment by council. What I'd like to do, if we can, to make sure that we keep our discussion concise is, I've broken it down into two separate categories. Wanted to, thought it would be good that if each council member, Mr. Wade, we'll start with you, you drew the lucky straw, that I want to go around and everyone give, out of those three options, what option that you would like to see, if you have any discussion, that you want to make some comments, that'd be great, and then we'll work, work our way around.
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of the things I said last week was, as elected officials, we are appointed to make tough decisions, and this is a tough decision. We might not all agree, but I think what's best for the council and to move on now, my selection would be appointment by council.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Mr. Smotherman.
Weighing the options, I, I look at the, what I consider the democratic process, which is always election, which would probably be pretty high on my list. Because of the timing of it, I think that we, we have functioned well in recent times, and I'm comfortable with the fact that even if we do appoint an additional member, we would still wind up with people on vacations and sick leaves and, and all the things that, just life that gets in the way of not having seven members at a council meeting. So, I guess the election would be my, one that I would prefer, but I would certainly strongly support leaving the seat vacant as well. So, that would be my choices.
Mr. Lance?
Yep, so, I've been fairly clear on this from the get-go, that my, my preference is to have an election. We're getting to the point now where I suspect we're, you know, when we first talked about this in January and we, you know, we're looking at this whole idea of should we appoint or elect or any of this, when we very, I guess maybe it was February, but I think it was January where, you know, we have to remember that we haven't been doing nothing for the last few months. You know, we had to put this off because if we would have appointed back then, we would have had the May and, and August double election scenario. So, we had to get the charter changed to be able to avoid that anyway. But, long story short, I'm, I'm staying with, with, with election.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Because of important issues that do come before the council, and we were elected to make decisions, and there will be some decisions coming to the council that we cannot afford to let the issue drop because of attire, whatnot, and my choice is to appoint.
Thank you, Ms. Skels Harris. Mr. Shacklet?
Well, let me explain, I guess, the thought process that I had. I, prior to coming to the city council, I was an election official for thirty years, helping to run elections in our city. So, my first preference would be to have an election. But, when we considered a change in our charter and revising it, we said we wanted to have choices. We wanted to have a variety of options available to us, given the circumstances that present ourselves. And so, ever since Doug passed, I've given a lot of thought and some effort into discerning what is the best decision for our community. And after talking to the election officials and realizing the, not only that it is a, you know, during the time that I was elected the last time, there wasn't an election, but we had an election in that cycle. But, we will not have an election until next year. And given consideration to the individuals that, that were available to us, I thought any choice of appointment would cause some conflict on this council and in the community, trying to evaluate whose perception is right, or who is the most worthy person to do this. After having presented the option of having Doug's wife serve out his term, and doing some investigation at every level of our government, in every party, the spouse, the surviving spouse has been given the opportunity to complete the service of someone who passes in, in the course of their term. After talking to Susan and confirming her as, her willingness to serve out Doug's term, and quite honestly, key for my decision to say, instead of an election, was her decision to not run in the next election, to give her an advantage. I thought that wasn't fair as well. Her willingness to fill out Doug's term and provide a clean slate for those that have a desire to serve this on city council in the next election, it makes absolutely perfect sense for me to have, to appoint Susan. The issue is, in, in the form of an election, and I know, like I say, I would be for that except for the fact of the conversation that I had with our election officials. We have several precincts in this city, well, they're actually county precincts, that have city residents in them. And the conduct of that, we can't restrict the way the process would be held. You'd have to open up pre, early voting precincts, and on election day, you'd have to open some precincts where there are only two or three city residents. So, it doesn't, to me, make logical sense for us to conduct an election. And her willingness to serve, to me, it's more, it's more than just this election of Susan. She's competent, she's caring, and she's willing to serve. And I think, to me, that is the, the best choice. So, not only is my choice appointment, but my choice is Susan Young.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shacklet.
I'm not going to right now get into individuals. I will say, with Susan sitting there, I wish Doug was sitting right next to me and that I was calling him on my phone. He would always leave his phone on during council member, so it was a running joke to see who we could catch Doug with his phone on during the council member, or kicking one another under, under the table. So, I, I wish, my, my biggest wish was that Doug was sitting here with me. I miss talking to him. I miss having that advi, that, that advice. So, with that, I really thought about this over the last several months, but really specifically the last week, since we had our council meeting last week. And, you know, I think I told y'all, as we sat here last week, I, I don't remember there being that much contention on a, on a council that I've, I've sat on. So, I, I asked Ms. Wright to help me pull up some, some information, and I wanted to make an informed decision. And Ms. Wright, thank you for, for pulling back, pulling this up. So, since nineteen ninety-eight, there've been two appointments that the city council has made for a council member. Mayor Reeves was elected in May of ninety-eight. He was, this was an off-election for, for, that let, it left the vacancy open. So, Mayor Reeves was elected, there was an off-election for him because he was, he served in the other, other term. So, the council appointed Ron Washington on May seventh, nineteen ninety-eight, to fill the remaining two terms of office. I didn't know this, but Ron finished fourth in that election that year. So, the council picked Ron, and at the time, there was not a minority that was serving on the coun, the council. And so, Ron served for almost nineteen years.
By fourth, you're saying he finished runner-up, because you're top three.
Yeah, yeah. So, then, the next one, John Pitter resigned in July first of two thousand and one. I was not here, but John was sick. The council decided to leave that position vacant until the April two thousand and two election, which was a total period of ten months. We have had two school board appointments, Ms. Nancy Rainier and Collier Smith. So, I've sat through both of those. And I said this on W.G.N.S. on, on Wednesday, and this is all due respect to the school board. The school board is much like one of our boards, they're focused on one thing, and that's the education of our students. The council members, we focus on a wide varying, 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 different items. So, I think we're not really comparing apples to apples on, on that. So, then, I went and I said, okay, I want to look at attendance. So, I went back and, not individual members, but I went, Ms. Wright went back to two thousand and fifteen, so, almost two and a half years ago. In two thousand and fifteen, we had thirty meetings in two thousand and fifteen. Out of those thirty meetings, we had a total of thirteen, that we had seven members that were at all those meetings. The average attendance in two thousand and fifteen was six. In two thousand and sixteen, we had a total of twenty-nine meetings. Out of those twenty-nine meetings, we had eleven that we had seven total members present. In two thousand and seventeen, seventeen, obviously with Doug passing away in December, we've been six for all of two thousand and seventeen. So, two thousand and fifteen, six, two thousand and sixteen, six, two thousand and seventeen, six. So, from the very get-go, I've told the council members, I felt like the absolute best thing to do is to keep it vacant and let the voters decide when an election comes around, when that election comes around. So, after looking at that, I would not do anything to, to hurt the young family or to hurt Susan, and especially to hurt Doug. But, I'm going to stick with my original gut feeling, which is, I, I'm going to stick with to keep the seat vacant.
So, we'll need to get a motion, one way or another, on what we want to do.
You know, it's interesting that the, the way we've found ourselves kind of points us to the fact of the need to have somebody to settle the vote. I mean, we, you know, we've got three people, or two people that are for leaving it vacant and one for an election, and there's three of us that have at least expressed a desire to fill it with Susan. I don't want to see us divided. I don't want to see us a split council, because, quite honestly, if the vote, wherever the vote goes, it will go on, and tomorrow we'll be working to do whatever's in the best interest of our citizens. But, it's interesting that the point is made by what happens, what's happened tonight, is that that fourth vote would have made the decision, regardless of what it is. Whether.
Unless they voted for election. Unless they voted for election, then we still wouldn't have a majority.
Well, I mean, even if we voted for appointment, we'd still need to discuss what process and we need to go through as far as how, which, which person would be selected, because I, I don't think that there's a given that just because we go through the appointment process that one person would pick the candidate. I mean, to say that we're appointing someone doesn't necessarily, and I'm not trying to get off in the names of anybody, but just because we choose the appointment process wouldn't mean that we would pick any particular individual. I will, I will, after listening to the information that Shane gave, I, I think that I would shift mine from election to leave it vacant, just because ultimately there will be an election, and then the people can decide who they want to represent them. Because we're not district representation, no one's left unrepresented. If it were, if we did have district representation, I, I think I would feel completely different. But, the cost of the fact that anybody can pick up the phone any day and call any of us with a concern that they'd have in the community, I think, with the information that we were just provided, I think leaving the seat vacant probably does make more sense than any of the options.
With, with all the time we've gone through on this, and it was my understanding we were waiting on the vote on the three issues that we presented to the legislation. Based on that, and I personally am exhausted with this. I would like to see us go on and make a decision, so I'd like to make a motion that we appoint.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
No.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
No. Motion fails.
So, where are we now? I think we're.
Stays like it is, is what it is, I think. Is that right?
Mr. Tindall?
The, if, if the council doesn't pass any other of the options, then the seat would remain vacant. So, there's not a need for another motion. Council can move to, to leave the seat vacant if they want to choose to do it affirmatively, but it's not necessary to do that.
I, I want to add something now that that's kind of happened the way it has. The way that this happened over the last two weeks and the three meetings that we've had, you know, my personal preference on this, if, if anybody agrees with this, would be that we move forward with a process, a workshop, to try to build some parameters for appointing. If in the future this were to come up, that there is some kind of process in place. You know, I said from the get-go, election. The main reason I like election is because I want public input, and I think the public should deserve to be able to have input and be a part of this decision. And this was just the polar opposite of that. And I told somebody yesterday, I mean, I, I wouldn't have appointed Ronald Reagan with this process, which is no public input whatsoever, with no time, you know, no information, no time, no nothing, as far as from the time this came up. So, I guess I'm trying to say, you know, maybe it's a good idea for us to try to, at a workshop or something, talk through, okay, look, if this comes up, should we look at some sort of a charter change going into next, next session as it relates to, you know, having some sort of process in place, or even if that takes a charter change, I don't even know, but to be able to say, hey, this is kind of what we think the appointment process should look like if we want to go down that road. That, that was important to me, so if you guys feel that way, we can talk, you know, go, you know, uh, that's, the process has always been my issue with it, and still is. So, anyway.
Well, appointment has failed. The, the other two remaining options is election or leave it vacant. Obviously, if we don't have an election, we're going to leave it vacant because we're not going to make appointment, we're not going to have an election, so the seat will remain vacant. If you want to make the motion being you support the election, we could vote on whether or not we want to have an election, and then if it fails for lack of a second, or if it fails for lack of majority, then we would automatically have diverted back to leaving the seat vacant.
I think we already have.
Is, is that correct? I mean.
Well, you could do that, but given that council hasn't taken any action otherwise, it would remain vacant.
I understand the, and we voted, and that's the way it's going to be. I would love to have seen Susan sit on the council. That was my choice. The reason that we were talking about, and if we have a workshop, you know, whoever, if in the future we appoint somebody, I just don't think it's fair that we appoint somebody with some experience or we get to, get to know them better, because, or they need to know the issues that are coming before the council, because I know for myself, when I came before the council, I wasn't familiar with any other issues. So, you know, I just think it's.
with any other issues. So, you know, I just think it's unfair that we would say someone needs to know our issues. But, anyway, the vote has been taken, the decision has been made.
And I think I can speak very clearly on this. This is not a decision on Susan Young. So, I, I want you to know that. I, I was going to say, I think I can say this pretty clearly for the council, this is not a decision on Susan Young. I, I, I want you to, from, from me, I want you to know that. So, we'll move to Board and Commission Appointments. You have several different people to put on the Construction Board of Adjustment Appeals. Reappoint Ms. Carolyn Lester, Lester and Mr. Mike Picklesimer. Appoint Mr. Matt Taylor to replace Logan Hickerson. Mr. Ben Blake to replace Mike Hudson. The Pension Committee, reappoint Mr. Earl Hull, Mr. Charlie Myatt, Mr. Greg Sample, Mr. Rob Lines, Ms. Melissa Wright, Mr. Mark McClossey, McCluskey. The Planning Commission to reappoint Ms. Jennifer Garland, and appoint Mr. Warren Russell for Mr. Tom Clark. The Water and Sewer Board to appoint Ms. Kathy Nobles and Mr. John R. Santa Moore, Moore Jr. The Greenway Projects Committee, reappoint Mr. Lamar Dixon, Dixon and Mr. Dan Shirley. Board of Gas Examiners, reappoint Mr. Mike Dewis, Mr. Curtis Harold, Mr. Steve Morris. The Senior Citizen Commission, reappoint Ms. Dolores Doyle, Mr. Jim Getzinger, Mr. Christopher Logel, Mr. Pettish Reed, and Ms. Marie Trot.
Move for approval. Have a motion.
All good candidates. I second.
Second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have a few beer permits in front of you?
Mayor, we have a new location for a restaurant at nineteen thirty-five South Church Street. They have met all of our requirements, and we are ready to issue that permit once they get their occupancy application approved by Building and Codes. Additionally, we have a date correction for a permit you've already approved for Oakland's Association for a special event permit. They realized once they got the permits that they had actually applied for a, the wrong date. Same location, same, near the same time, but the new date will be August the twelfth instead of August the fifth. And we recommend approval on all of those.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have one statement that needs to be paid.
Move to pay the bills. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business to come before the city council? No, we'll stand adjourned.